Good morning and welcome to our November 4th Planning Commission Hearing. It's voting day, so if you haven't voted, please take the time to do so today. We have a pretty short agenda. We did have plans for Pastor Myron Boyd from White House Fellowship Church. Is he here today or anyone from that church here for an invocation? Okay, well, we'll move on if you would please join me in the pledge and then we'll call our meeting to order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'll call the meeting to order at 9:01. I'll turn it over to John to get us started with our agenda.
And thank you, Madam Chair and Board. The hearing today will be conducted with the following process and procedure. Each case will be called in numerical order. When the case is called, we would ask that the applicant please stand and raise their hand to show that they are in attendance. After that, we're going to call to see if there's anyone here opposed to that specific case. We would also ask that the opposition please stand and raise their hand so that they can be counted for the official record. After that, both parties will be asked to come forward to be sworn in. The applicant will testify first and then the opposition, if any, will testify second. It's important to note that each side gets 10 minutes to state their case. There's not a process to reserve your time and there's not a rebuttal process, so please convey all your information to the board within your 10-minute time period. Additionally, if there's more than one person who wishes to speak on the case, you may want to coordinate with each other about what you're going to talk about because each side only gets 10 minutes and you don't want to cover the same information over and over. After that, the board will start to discuss the case at hand. During the discussion, they may ask questions from one of the speakers. And at that point, the board will make a decision to either approve, deny, hold, or continue the matter at hand. There are two cases on today's printed agenda which have been withdrawn without prejudice. And these cases will not be heard. First case is resounding case Z-24 of 2025 Crawford Creek Acquisitions LLC. This case has been withdrawn without prejudice, will not be heard today. Next case is resounding case Z-29 of 2025 George A. Bueno Chiropractic LLC. This case has been withdrawn without prejudice, will not be heard today. There are four cases on today's printed agenda which have been continued. And these cases will not be heard this month. First case is resounding case Z-2 of 2024 Flor Nori Development Group LLC. This case was continued until the December 2nd, 2025 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-2 of 2024 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z-27 of 2025 Knight Partners LLC. This case was continued until the December 2nd, 2025 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-27 of 2025 will not be heard today. LUP 37 of 2025 Eddie Ramos. This case was held by the Planning Commission until the December 2nd, 2025 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-37 of 2025 will not be heard today. And finally, LUP 38 of 2025 Jose Chavez. This case was held by the Planning Commission until the December 2nd, 2025 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So LUP 38 of 2025 will not be heard today. I would like to ask the folks in today's audience, if you have a cellphone, please turn the volume off on your cellphones. When the phones ring, it does interfere with the broadcasting presentations. And I want to remind applicants, opposition, or any interested party that information is due to this board the Wednesday prior to this hearing. And any information submitted after the Wednesday due date may or may not be considered by the board at their discretion. And with that, Madam Chair and Board, I'm ready to start the consent agenda.
Please proceed.
Cobb County Planning Commission zoning hearing consent agenda for November 4th, 2025. First case on consent is resounding case Z-28 of 2025 Roswell Lodge Number 165 Free and Accepted Masons. Request rezoning from NRC to ONI for a charitable club and organization and retail in Land Lot 107 of the 16th District. The property is located on the south side of Sandy Plains Road, west of Alabama Road. The Planning Commission recommends deletion to the NRC zoning district subject to the following conditions. Number one, use of property for clubs or lodges, non-commercial, for this applicant only and for neighborhood retail uses. Number two, Fire Department comments and recommendations. Number three, Stormwater Management Division comments and recommendations. Number four, Water and Sewer Division comments and recommendations. Number five, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. And number six, applicant to install or maintain a six-foot solid wooded and privacy fence along the residential zoning districts. Is the applicant present?
Yes, Jeff Barnes for the Roswell Lodge.
Okay, let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to resounding case Z-28? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Next case on consent is LUP 45 of 2025 L. Frank Shirley. Request a temporary land use permit renewal for equipment storage for a contractor business in Land Lot 22 of the 20th District. The property is located on the northwesterly side of Way Green Road, north of Hickory Grove Road. Staff recommends approval for 12 months, subject to the following conditions. Number one, time given to the applicant to prepare and submit plans to redevelop the property and seek a long-term zoning needed. Number two, property to be substantially clear and clean. And number three, at any given time, not more than 15 vehicles, trailers, trucks, cabs, and pieces of heavy construction equipment are to be kept overnight on the property. Is the applicant present? Is the applicant here for LUP 45 L. Frank Shirley? Is there anyone here opposed to this case? Madam Chair and Board, the applicant is not present. There is no one opposed. Would it be the board's desire just to leave this one on consent?
Yes.
Okay, we'll leave it on consent. And that completes the consent agenda, Madam Chair and Board.
All right, thank you, John. I'll entertain a motion.
Some moves.
Second. All right, we have a second from Commissioner Anderson. Any discussion? Call the question. And the consent agenda is passed 3O.
Okay, the cases that were in consent, you're free to leave. Just come back in two weeks for the board commissioners' hearing. And with that, I'm ready to start the regular cases. First case we're going to hear is resounding case Z-26 of 2025 Scott Moore. Request rezoning from NS to LRC for Hair Salon in Land Lot 160 of the 20th District. The property is located on the southeast corner of Jim Owens Road and Acworth U.S. Road. Is the applicant present? Is there anyone here opposed to resounding case Z-26? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
All right, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Planning Commissioners. For the record, my name is Kevin Moore. I'm here on behalf of the applicant Scott Moore, no relation, and the property owner in this application for rezoning. This property is almost half an acre. It's just less than about .42 acres. Located in West Cobb at the intersection of Acworth through West Road and Jim Owens Road. You can see on your GIS map where it's located there at that intersection. That intersection was improved within the last decade to install a roundabout. And that's what you see there. This property, though, was originally constructed with an existing building back in the early 1960s. I think 1960 is what staff determined when it was originally constructed, which was prior, of course, to the adoption of our zoning code in 1972. The building that is there was also converted at that time to a small commercial retail type of use and building. The building looks somewhat like a house and very attractive for this section of West Cobb County, but has been used for years and years and years as a retail commercial use, primarily selling of things like home goods and small antiques and of that nature. Because you can see the property itself is not very large, so it's been pretty limited, which is why it has a zoning designation of neighborhood shopping. You wouldn't expect that at this location because you see the R-30s and the R-20s, though this is adjacent to an elementary school. And you also see the NRC and NS uses, additional commercial-type uses, but very low-intensity type of commercial uses that are kind of catty-corner across the roundabout. But this is just what I would refer to as back in the 60s and 70s. It was kind of a country crossroads in West Cobb County. So it had a couple of very nice, small, limited types of retail shops that served that immediate area. And it continued to do so for many, many, many years. And in fact, zoned, like I said, in neighborhood shopping. As you know, we did away with neighborhood shopping in 1996, except for areas on the future land use plan that are within a regional activity center or a commercial activity center. And this finds itself actually in LDR, Low Density Residential, at this intersection. But that use continued. However, at this point, those that ran that store no longer wish to do so. They've done it for many years and have been marketing this property for quite some time. What we're proposing for your consideration this morning is rezoning the property to LRC for limited retail commercial, which is a very fitting zoning category for this location. This is not a heavy or intense intersection. It still remains as a roundabout, even though it is a roundabout to help move traffic. It is a location that still remains very limited and very low intensity, which is fitting for a limited retail commercial site. The proposed change in use, as opposed to a small retail store, is for a hair salon, but a small one. This would have a maximum of six suites. And we'll turn to the site plan itself now. And you can kind of see how this fits together. The improvements that you see on the property, the .4 acres, are the existing two-story building. There's existing parking in a commercial arrangement. The existing parking is 12 spots. This building only requires 10. We are increasing the parking by six spots to go to a total of 18 parking spots on this plan so we can accommodate a maximum of six salon suites that would occur on the first floor. The building itself will simply be renovated. It's commercial today inside and the interior and exterior. It'll just simply be renovated in the interior to make use for a hair salon, like you would expect with six suites, with the upstairs second floor simply providing for administrative offices. The only other improvements are adding the six additional spaces, which we wanted to make sure of in our discussions with the county as well and for our future use, is to ensure we have adequate parking with 18 spaces. That's more than adequate for a maximum of six suites. Rezoning of this property to the LRC category, we believe, is appropriate. It's appropriate in the eyes of your professional staff as well, who recognize the same things that I'm telling you here today in their recommendation for approval. They also recommended certain conditions of which we are in agreement. Those conditions are found in the staff's comments and recommendations, and we are in agreement with each and every staff comment and recommendation. Likewise, this would be for salon use only, which is appropriate. Any future change in use, given somewhat limited sensitive nature of this particular intersection, should go back to the board for consideration if a change in use would occur. There's no outdoor storage, no outdoor display of merchandise as well. And so we're in agreement with the staff's recommendations and as well as their recommended conditions. The only one that should be added, is it should be added, it's noted in the staff's narrative, but it should be noted, this should be for a maximum of six salon suites. That's the only additional stipulation or condition that we would ask so that it kind of completes that package of the entire proposal for you. Again, this is coming to you with a professional staff recommendation for approval. All of their conditions that staff has made, we're in agreement with. This rezoning also somewhat settles what happens at this intersection. You see that there's no opposition. As a LRC, it's appropriate. It keeps the structure intact. The renovation that's going to occur is just inside with just some exterior maintenance because the building itself is still and has remained in good shape. It's not dilapidated and it's appropriate for the area. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have. Also, Mr. Moore and his representatives are here and will be happy to answer any questions that you may have. And with that, we would respectfully request your recommendation of approval, subject to all of staff's comments, with the additional condition of a maximum of six suites. And we respectfully request that recommendation to the board of commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'll just stay right here in case y'all have any questions.
That is fine. We don't have, this is in District 1, and so District 1 Commissioner is not here today. And so we will carry on with a few questions from us as commissioners and also will call some of our staff up too. If you don't mind, you can go ahead and take a seat.
Sure.
And then I'll have a couple of questions for our staff. If we could have DOT.
Wilson Collins, Department of Transportation.
All right, good morning to you. So can you talk a little bit about just your findings on just the increased, I guess, parking, but also due to the location of the property near the roundabout? How will that impact traffic in and out and just the additional parking as well?
I believe the stated salons was six, so the impacted traffic would be negligible, not an increase of traffic compared to what's already on-site.
Okay, and then also just the flow of traffic as far as exiting? Is there a D cell lane today? I don't see it from here, but will there be one? Is there a need for one? Can you just expand on your findings there?
Yeah, so it's a, we're not requiring a D cell lane with the low traffic and it's going to be a commercial-grade driveway as proposed. So we're going to make sure that there's adequate room once you turn into the radius to be able to free-range to park, free movement to the parking lot. And that will be reviewed during plan review to ensure that's in check.
Okay, and just one other question. With the salon like this, I think they said six suites. I would think you'd need a certain number of, you know, customers coming in and out in order to, for those tenants to be able to, you know, produce income to meet the facility needs. But can you talk a little bit about just the traffic flow, cars coming in and out? Any of that or any concern at all when it comes to just parking and the number of 18 slots compared to just six salon suites there?
I can't speak to the parking requirements. That's dictated by the code. But I don't see any, I don't anticipate any increased traffic flow.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Any other questions from the commissioner? All right, thank you so much. All right, can we also have Stormwater?
Hello, Andrew Heath, Cobb Stormwater Management.
Hey, good morning, Andrew. Can you just share a little bit of the discussion thoughts around Stormwater for this particular area? It's not changing much, to my knowledge. Of course, it will change in the parking, number of parking lots. But can you just give us an overview of your findings and any thoughts and concerns?
Yes. As the applicant representative was stating, it's built, it's been there, the facility's been there for a very long time before the recent roundabout improvements were constructed. It's on kind of a localized high point, so runoff from the site in its existing condition kind of drains away in different directions. The existing building and parking is already present. They are proposing to modify the onsite parking somewhat, which will result in a little increase in impervious area, a little bit less than 1,200 square feet, which is below our threshold. That would require them to actually do something about that minor increase. And so really, from our standpoint, what they're proposing to do on-site is minor enough that it doesn't trigger any requirements for us, for them to address. So, and so other than that, we don't really have any real concerns about what's proposed at the site.
Okay, all right, thank you so much. Any, I'm sorry, before you go, Andrew, any questions, additional questions from the other commissioners? All right, thank you, Andrew. All right, and I'll have the applicant come back up, please. So just a few additional questions around just understanding more about the site. I know you mentioned that it would be a renovation. How much of the building will be renovated, in a sense, in order to get to this final outcome? Are you changing foundation, anything foundational, expanding? Can you please share?
Sure. So there's not going to be any expansion of the existing building, so it will remain the same size. 90% of the work that will be done will be interior, just to modify the interior from basically what was an older home good and antique-type shop to allow for salon suites. And the additional six parking spots that will be done to, on the grounds themselves, are really the only renovations. So the building itself will have a little update on the maintenance on the exterior, but otherwise, no exterior changes beyond that.
Okay. And you mentioned the changes from the interior. Can you share a little bit more about how that will look? What will the design look like? And also, just the staffing? Is it just, will it just be hairstylist only? Or can you share more about staffing and interior design?
Interior design is just salon suites on the first floor. So it'll have like a lobby-type area where you come in and enter and then you have what are effectively kind of larger cubicles, as you might expect if you go into a salon, that will be set up in that arrangement. From a staffing standpoint, it's a maximum of six suites, so you'd have a maximum of six stylists and then their customers. So, which is why we've kind of got the parking, it relates to really parking. And so as, from a code matter, this only requires 10 parking spots. Today, this has 12, and we're going to add six more. The idea is kind of a rule of thumb of having three spots per suite because you have, you know, if everybody's there, which can happen, then you'd have six stylists and presumably if they have their customers there, you could have 12 and maybe even a couple of more waiting, but that's considered more than sufficient. We just wanted to make sure that we had sufficient parking on-site, obviously, to not create any issue there.
Okay, and the stylists, you mentioned that, will that be only hairstylist? Or could there be other type of stylists or industries that would be allowed in the building?
Yes, this is just proposed for hairstylist.
Okay. Any additional, anything else you can tell us as far as like the second floor? I think you said a two-story building. The salon suites are just on the first floor, is that correct?
That's correct.
What would take place on the second floor?
Second floor is just, it'll just be office space. It's almost set up for that today, but there's a little, they'll do a little bit of work upstairs to create just administrative office space. So there's a place to have your computers and those types of things for the stylists to use.
Okay. Any additional questions? Any, yes, please.
Kevin, just wanted to see, is there any trash enclosures or any need for a trash enclosure on this site plan? Or is just that use won't really require anything dedicated on the outside?
It just doesn't require it like that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And one other question about just signage.
Yes.
Can you tell us a little bit about the signage for the, is there signage there today for the existing building? How will the signage change and will that impact the traffic at all?
It will not impact traffic at all. There will be ground-based monument signage that'll be utilized, but that's it. That'll be in keeping with the building, so it'll look appropriate. And the only issue with it is you just have to put it where it doesn't impede visual sightlines from the two access, from the one access point on Jim Owens.
Okay. All right, any additional questions?
Thank you for your questions.
Thank you. All right, so for this, and I understand that Commissioner Beloin is not here today, but for this case, I think it would be best that we continue it. I'll make a motion to continue the case until the December meeting. In that timeframe, though, I would ask the applicant, maybe, you've shared a lot of great information, but if you could, just share a little bit more and come with a more insight on to the interior design, just to show maybe even visually the salon suite interior design, what it would look like, spacing, visibility into each of the suites. I think just to make sure that as we move forward with any spaces like this, that they will, of course, stay a salon, but that is the type of industries that we have in these buildings. So I would make a motion to continue the case and would entertain a second.
Madam Chair.
I'm sorry, hold, please. Hold the case.
Second.
Okay, we have a second from Commissioner Anderson. Any discussion? Call a question? Okay, and Z-26 is held until our December planning meeting. Thank you.
Okay, next case is LUP 42 of 2025 Jose Santos Maheno. Request a temporary land use permit to allow more vehicles than the code allows in Land Lot 557 of the 19th District. The property is located on the southwest side of Woodley Road and on the northeast side of Callaway Road, west of Ostel Road. Is the applicant present? The applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP 42? No one? If you let the record show, there's no one opposed. Would the applicant please come forward to be sworn in?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Could you please state your name for the record and then you may begin? You have 10 minutes to share your thoughts.
Good morning. My name is Molly Mahano and I am Jose's daughter. And I'm here today regarding a request for a parking permit to allow additional vehicles to park at my residence. The reason I'm asking for this permit is because there are four of us in the household who drive, three adults and one minor, but we all do have licenses. We each have our own work and school schedules. I work and attend school along with my brother and the others in the household work as well. Because of that, we have needed several vehicles for everyone to get where they need to go. We also have an extra vehicle as a backup since we never know when one of our cars... backup, since we never know when one of our cars might have an issue or need repairs. I always make sure that our vehicles are parked safely and don't block driveway sidewalks or create any inconvenience to our neighbors. I respect the parking rules and understand that they're in place to keep things organized, but I'm simply asking for permission to legally park the vehicles that belong to the people living in my home. And the first time that we did get a violation was because one of our vehicles was parked on, with, two of the wheels were parked on the yard, and I totally understand that it was a mistake. And we did fix that issue. We did end up getting pavers and fixing it up to, from the road to where we were parking our vehicle from. So we have two vehicles on the pavers from, the paver start from the road and almost up to our, our, the side of our house. And then we also got a violation for the, the single-use family. But there is only four of us. It's me and my parents and my little brother.
Okay. Any additional comments you'd like to make?
Um, no.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you so much. You can, well, you can just stand right there. Just a second. So we, this is in District 4, so I'll ask Commissioner Massey to lead the discussion.
Actually, if you would, just take a seat for me. I want to actually bring the code enforcement to speak on your case first, and then I'll bring you back up if that's okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Yalisa Foster, Cobb County Code Enforcement.
Thank you, Ms. Foster, for joining us. Can you please explain to us how we arrived here? Can you tell us about the violations that code enforcement was able to see?
We received a complaint on August 13th of 2025 in regards to parking standards. The officer went out on August 14th and issued a notice of violation for single-family dwelling and parking standards. The officer had observed a trailer that was parked on the grass, and there was also a few vehicles. They're allowed to have three adults and three vehicles at the property. The officer did get to speak with the property owner about the violations. They did correct the parking standards issue, and the only violations that they have at the property currently is that they have too many vehicles, and the property was inspected on October 28th, 2025, and there's still a lot of vehicles.
Thank you. Do you know the number of vehicles that have been identified on the property?
They have up to seven vehicles on the property.
Okay. Thank you so much, Ms. Foster. Does any of the fellow commissioners have any questions for code enforcement? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I can have the applicant back up, please. Can you start with clarifying for us who is dwelling in the home, who lives there in your home?
Okay. So it is me, which I'm 19, and then there's my two parents, which is my mom and my dad, and it's my little brother. And like I said, we all have our license, so we all drive. We all have different work schedules. My mom works two jobs, so she works in the morning and at night. So we usually just, we really don't see each other when we, when it comes to that. And then-
How old is your brother? Excuse me, I'm sorry.
He's 16.
16, okay. Continue.
And he did get his license at 16 because he did the Joshua law. And all, all our vehicles do have tags and insurance, all them. So there's no vehicle that's not, that doesn't have a tag, a plate, or anything.
So if you can explain to me how many vehicles there are and who drives which vehicle, please.
All right. So we have about seven to eight vehicles, and we do, well, one of them, we got a couple of them. It used to be one of our, one of my dad's work trucks because he does work in construction. So he needs to travel a lot working due to that. And he does, well, we just had one, and one, the transmission just broke. So we have, we always have an extra vehicle to one another, because we had two vehicles so far that have, that the transmissions have broke, and we have got in one fixed, and we're working on the other one. In a couple of weeks, it's getting sent to the shop. So we usually have, so each, it's just like, he, one another drives whatever car that is available. And like, none of them are blocking the, none of them are parked on the side of the road, none of them are blocking anything that is not supposed to be.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant? Please.
So I see in the site, in the aerial on the screen, that there's, there's a garage. Can you tell me, is that garage where you park some of the cars?
Yes, it is a carport. It's an open carport.
Okay.
And we do have about two cars right there.
Okay. And then you have, so two cars can fit there. There's one just to the right of the park, of the carport, and then the one all the way at the top, right to the left of the R15. So those, how did, so how exactly do those get parked? It doesn't look like there's a driveway.
So like I did mention, we do have pavers. We installed those when we got the violation, the notice when we got it. We installed those the same couple of days after, I think it was that same weekend. And we do have it from the side of the road, from the curb all the way up to where, almost the side of the house, where, exactly where R15 is, it has on the picture, it's right, the pavers are right there.
So, so that main driveway, you go, come around the carport and then-
Oh, no.
Drive the car?
Our driveway is our, just our driveway. And then on the other side of the house, it is the, the pavers. So it is like how, it's like if we would have put another driveway on that side, but it's just pavers.
Okay. Is there like a street view that we could see on the, on the map? Let's see if they can bring it up. And that's, that's the house?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
So like how the carport is on the left side, that is our driveway, that's the main driveway that's been there. And then where the truck is, the white truck, which is on the right, so that is where we have the pavers from, right from where you would get on the yard, we have them. So no, no vehicle is touching no grass or anything. They are located on the pavers from the curb all the way up to the corner of our house.
Okay. So it's not like you have to go into the neighbor's yard in order to act-
No.
driveway. Okay. This is all, okay.
This is still all on our property. Well, we have spoken to our neighbors. They said it was fine that, because I know some neighbors have issues sometimes, but we're, we're, we have spoken to them, and they said it was fine, that it wasn't in their way. And like I said, we're still on our property.
Okay. And then have you spoken to any of your other neighbors about arrangements to have, I don't know how the relationship is with the neighbors, but have you spoken with any of them about potentially, for some of these cars, which seems like a lot of them are backup cars? So is there anybody in the neighborhood you've spoken to about, do they have excess space or an area where you could tuck some of these cars away? Have you spoken to anybody about that?
Um, no, we haven't. Due to us, like, like I said, everything is on our property. Nothing is on, either parked on the side of the road or anything. It's not in anybody's way. They're all on our, on our driveway or on our pavers that, like, we're able to move the vehicles around if we have to, or if we choose to. And, well, we have no, well, I think we have no reason to ask our neighbors for that. Because we all have our own property, and we're not in their way or anything disturbing them in any form.
And then just, I'm clear then, the, the pavers that you use to park the vehicle at the truck, the truck on the left, there's no curb cut that you've put down there, right? There's no apron? That's just pavers that, how, how do you get onto those pavers?
It's, so the curb is like, it's literally right there on the side, where you just get on, like, you're just able to drive straight forward.
Over the curb? Like, onto the pavers?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
I have a question for Department of Transportation, if you don't mind. Couple of questions, actually.
Wilson Collins, Department of Transportation.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. It appears from the applicant's photo, a fourth area view of the applicant's home, that there's almost like a second driveway that's kind of been established here. And I kind of wanted to, I wondered what impact to that curb, one. And then, two, would it be a recommendation for the applicant to possibly have a second driveway, if that's what they were going to do in terms of parking? How would that impact?
Okay. For the first question with regard to the curbing, it's, from street view, you could tell that it's rollback curbing. So it's actually possible to, to build up a driveway without cutting into the curb, because it's not straight up, it's kind of rolled back. So it does not look like a curb cut was made based on the historic photos. And as for the evaluation of a second driveway, I have not looked if they would be able to meet the minimum criteria, but that's definitely an option that could be evaluated if they wanted to come in for a second driveway permit. I'm not sure the road frontage is there to allow that offhand, though.
Thank you so much. Does any of the fellow commissioners have any questions for Department of Transportation? Sure. You're running.
Mal, you forced me to. No, the, for the pavers, do you happen to know, Wilson, whether there was any permit required to put something like that down?
There's not a permit to put down pavers, per se, but I guess there is a driveway permit, if, if a second driveway or replacement driveway was to be installed or required. Actually, if there's any further modifications to the driveway, it would require to meet some of those requirements for driveway.
Yeah. Because, yeah, it sounds like we, even if it's not, pavers aren't required, it's effectively being used as a second driveway already. So, yeah, so I just wanted to clarify that it's, it sounds like a permit would be required for this to actually be used as a second driveway.
A second driveway would require a, a permit. Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. Great. Thank you.
Are there specific pavers required for parking?
I would defer to zoning, I believe, just for previous, impervious pavers.
Yeah. And as far as pavers go, Commissioner Massey, we do allow pavers to be used to park cars on, but they have to be dug into the ground. They can't be put on top of the ground. So once they're in the ground, then they meet our requirements.
Understood. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Wilson, Mr. Collins. I appreciate you. Can I have the applicant up one more time, please? Thank you. Sorry to make you exercise today.
It's okay.
Okay. So just, I just wanted to clarify, there are four people in the home, mother, father, you, yourself, and your brother, who is 16. There are seven to eight vehicles. Some of them are operable, some of them not.
Um, most, well, most of them are. Now, we just have one that we're working on.
One that's inoperable, that needs some work, that's going to be worked on in a couple of weeks. The driveway, did you hear Mr. Peterson's comment about the pavers? Are the, were the pavers that are associated with the second side of your home, are they dug into the ground, or are they placed on top of?
They're slightly dug in, probably like an inch or two.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions for the applicant? Okay. For purposes of discussion, I don't know that I'm prepared to make an actual motion because I believe that there are a couple of things that need to happen here. One, I believe that this second driveway needs to be evaluated with Department of Transportation. I believe ultimately, especially if there isn't frontage available for that, I want that mitigated before we're able to make a motion on, on that. I want that addressed. My motion would be to hold this for, to our December meeting, so that the applicant can work with Department of Transportation with respect to this paved driveway, and then we can address the other matters with respect to the people and the vehicles in our December meeting.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second from Commissioner Anderson. Any discussion? Call a question? Okay. And LEP42 is hail 3-0.
Okay. Next case is LEP43 of 2025. William Shelman requests a temporary land use permit to allow stores of construction materials and a shipping container in Land Lot 779 of the 16th District. The property is located on the northwest intersection of East Lake Drive and Boyd Road, west of West Kemp Road. Is the applicant present? The applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LEP43? There's none, there's none here right now, Madam Chair and Board. But there's one person who had to leave, so we're just going to count one. But he was here, but he had to leave.
Okay.
All right. Would the applicant please come forward to be sworn in?
Good morning, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
If you could please state your name for the record, and then you have 10 minutes to share your, your case.
I'm William Shelman. I owned, I own the property, the apartments, and my house is adjacent to the apartments, and I've got a building permit to build the addition and onto my home, and that's what, all that storage is about. When I finish with that, it'll all be removed.
Okay. Any additional comments you'd like to share?
No. Soon as I'm done, I'll remove it all. It'll be, it'll all be used, and I'll remove the container holds, windows, appliances, stuff, the things I've collected to complete the addition.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much. You can have-
I should be done in about a year, is what I plan on doing.
Okay.
Hopefully earlier, because I live in the house.
Okay. If you don't have any additional comments, you can have a seat. We may have to call you back up for some more additional questions. Thank you so much. All right. At this time, I'd like Code Enforcement, this is in District 3. Commissioner Dance is not here today, so we'll continue to hear the case and ask, ask some questions. So Code Enforcement could come up. I have a few questions for, for you.
Good morning. Yalisa Foster, Cobb County Code Enforcement.
All right. Good morning to you. So could you, again, I know we've heard this maybe one or two months ago, but if you could just, for sake of bringing us back up to speed, kind of restate Code Enforcement's dealings with this particular case, and also if there's any new additional information that you've seen, shared, or heard from your team, that would be helpful as well.
We received a complaint in January of 2025 stating that the vehicles are parked in the back of the property. It looks like- It looks like a business was being ran from the property and that there were numerous business vehicles parked there. Officer went out to inspect the property on January 15th of 2025 and issued a notice of violation for customary home occupation, parking standards, and outside storage as well. Also, in April, a notice of violation was issued for penalties. This property has prior zoning stipulations from 2024 that state that all equipment, trucks and trailers, were to be removed from the property within six months. So currently, the property is in violation of the prior zoning stipulations, and due to that, citations has been issued. And the owner went to court in June after being issued citations and pled guilty and paid the fines.
Okay. Any additional information on the property since, I do believe, in June? You mentioned June.
Currently, the property is, you know, still in violation, still as is.
And what would be the things that are needed to bring it into compliance? Like to get it out of viol... I mean, it's currently in violation, as you mentioned. I think you said the applicant went to court, they did pay the fee, but as it stands, it's still in violation. What are those things needed in order to get it into compliance?
Everything would have to be removed because the property is not zoned to have all the materials and all the business vehicles and everything there.
Okay, and how long? I know, I believe you said you mentioned earlier in the year is when you... We... There was the first violation issued, but do you have any idea of how long this has been in this particular state?
Being that there was stipulations in 2024, it's probably... Could have been like that for a year or more.
Okay, anything additional?
No, ma'am.
Any questions from my fellow commissioners from code enforcement?
Only question I had, Ms. Foster, was when this case came around a year in its prior submission, there was the... A business or landscaping business that I think the gentleman had said he had sold, and then there was opposition that said there was still some arrangement or operations of landscaping going on here. Was there anything in code enforcement's site visits that indicated any kind of commercial use at the property?
As far as before, this gentleman had the property?
No, as most recent visits. Is there any... Or does it just seem like, based on your observation, the violations are strictly limited to just storage?
It just looks like it's being used for storage.
Okay.
But the property is zoned for residential, it's not zoned for business. That's pretty much why the violations are there.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to bring the applicant back up. Sir, if you could, I have a few additional questions just for clarity's sake. So just for additional clarity, I know we heard from code enforcement, they just mentioned that you did go to court, you paid a fine, the property is still, in a sense, not in compliance. I know a few months ago, or the last time we heard the case, there were a couple of things that Commissioner Dance asked that be done as far as cleaning up the property, doing a number of things in order to get it as close to compliance as absolutely possible. Can you talk a little bit about what has been done since the last time we heard this case? Anything you've done on your part during that time?
There was a container down there and a container up at my house at the Addison Road House. All of those are gone. There's no parking. There's nothing down there but, as she said, storage. All that's down there are the building materials, the cinder blocks, the siding, the lumber, stone, everything I need to do the addition on the house. Other than that, there's nothing else down there about any business. The business is gone, the trucks are gone, everything's gone. What remains is for the construction of my home.
Okay, and so the construction, when did you start construction of the home?
I have completed two renovations on houses here off the square of Marietta. I needed to finish those due to the expense and get those COs done before I started mine. I've had the building permit for my home for quite some time because, of course, I would like to get it done and over with, but I'm getting ready to start. I just needed to recoup after the... And I've explained to the code enforcement my scenario and what I'm trying to do logistically. I'm trying to... I have the building permit in place. I'm getting ready to dig the footings. I'm getting ready to start, and I just don't have any place to store all that on the property. That's why I'm using my property behind the apartments for the storage. And hopefully, I'll be done with this in a year. But there's no trucks, there's no parking, there's nothing business-wise that goes on down there.
I'm sorry. To clarify, you were saying that you need one more year, so 12 months for additional storage, but how long has it been there prior to this additional time?
I've been collecting it. There used to be hardly anything there, but I've been... It's been collected as I purchase it.
Over what period of time?
I'd say about a year or so since I've been working on the other houses.
Okay.
And I'm down to my house. I'm not going to renovate any more of my properties. This is going to be our retirement home.
Understood, thank you.
Okay, any additional questions from other commissioners?
Yep. So I remember last time you were here, Mr. Shellman, there was a... You had said that you were selling the business, the landscaping business. There was a rate... And some of the stuff was being stored there until that sale closed.
The trucks.
Okay, it was just the trucks and the storage?
And that one container that I took out. There were two down there, and that was part of the business, and I got rid of everything pertaining to the business. If you drive down there, you'll see everything down there is construction material. That's all that's left. There's one little shed left that I use for the apartments and a mower's, you know, the little mower, but that, my understanding, a 10 by 12 shed is allowed on... He's never said anything about that, Mr. Darrell, the code enforcement guy. His focus was on the containers, the truck parking, all that. And all that's gone except for the one container, again, I'm just going to use until... And I'm going to get rid of that, too. All of it's going to go.
Okay. And then is there currently... You can kind of see it on here. Maybe this is worth the street view as well. Is there any fencing that runs the whole length? We can... We'll bring up the...
I got fencing around the apartments and the property, yeah.
Oh, yeah. He's just going to bring it up on the screen just so we can get the benefit of at least seeing the street view. So you live on that parcel to the left of...
My home is...
Or I guess the non-apartment? I can see the apartments.
Addison Road is... Yes. So, yeah, all those trucks... Yeah, there it is, right there, 607. Right there, yes, that's my home, yeah. And Mike lives next door to me there, and Tabor is to the left.
Okay.
That's me.
And so the storage is on the parcel just south of that?
Yeah, it's just right behind, yeah. And that red container's left, right there, and everything else is gone. All the trucks are gone. The rest is just lumber, underplastic, and building, cinder block for the footings and foundation. It's all just related to the construction of my home, that's correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Originally, I was relocated there with the business and all, intending to get rid of it. That just facilitated that a little faster. That's gone. The other stuff was always there to build my home.
All right, thank you. If you could, John, talk a little bit about staff's recommendation for this particular case.
Yes, the staff recommendation was for denial, Madam Chair, and now is due to the fact that we don't allow containers to be kept in residential areas either for housing or for storage. You know, we... The board has found that they just create negative effects in the neighborhood when you have to look at a container day in and day out. Additionally, with all the outdoor storage of the construction materials, it tends to bring down a neighborhood from time to time. You know, if the board was to consider approval of this, you know, you probably should have a timeframe within the 12 months where things are getting better every month somehow. You know, he's condensing things, he's moving things around, he's getting rid of things he doesn't really need, but just progressing to the end of the 12 months to where in 12 months from now, there's nothing on the property.
Okay. All right. I think at this time, I will make a motion. I certainly understand, you know, the applicant's plans for renovating his home and doing a number of other things, but I think as time has progressed, I think we've seen that there is quite a bits of storage that still stands on the property, and it's been there for over a year's time outside of... Yeah, over a year's time. So I'll just make a motion for the purpose of discussion to align with the staff in denial, but give a six-month period in order to get the property in compliance. That would be my motion.
Second for the purposes of discussion?
Okay, we have a second from Commissioner Anderson. And discussion?
I do. And for the purposes of discussion, I do feel like that would be a pretty decent solution for the applicant. If he is going to start his build within a year, I imagine that some of the materials that is within that container will be removed and utilized, especially if it's foundational things. So the bulk of those things might even be gone from that container, and then the applicant can find adequate storage off-site for the additional build time and/or storage needs. So I think that that's a really good solution. I'm for it.
Yeah, and I'm in agreement with that. I do think that if there's a staging that... The applicant can work within a six-month period to remove any items that require that storage unit or container to be on there, then that would there allow for a less obtrusive use. And that, I mean, I don't know how long it takes to build a particular... The particular house that the applicant is looking to build, but I think just I stand with the planning commission staff on it not being something that would be consistent with the use here, but providing a ramp for the applicant to go ahead and still get that container out of there and still accomplish the build that they are seeking to do on their house.
And lessening the burden on the neighborhood and constituents around.
Yes. And I would also add that the... And traditionally, I think in the past, we've had either a check-in at a three-month period or where we have code enforcement go and just provide an update of the existing conditions. I know that we're trying to say, hey, the container needs... Everything needs to go by six months, but some evidence of progress would be good to see and have as well. So that would be my only addition to the six-month requirement.
So based... Just to make sure I understand, Commissioner Anderson, so based on your comments earlier, are you saying you are in favor of the denial for the six-month time period, or you're saying approval for that?
Oh, no, six-month denial, but with a six-month... Sorry, denial, but with a six-month period to remediate and interim check-in at three months. And if that check-in does come back and there's... Nothing's been happening, then I think that there's grounds for another discussion as to either accelerating that removal requirement or just want to make sure that there's a good faith effort of items actually being removed in accordance with the denial.
Okay. All right, so I will amend my motion. I'd like to make a motion to align with the staff's recommendation for denial of the case with a timeline of six months to come into compliance as well as a three-month check-in. So within that time period, three months in, we'd ask the applicant to come back, just tell us about progress, how things are going. Again, we want to make sure that we can get his... The things he wants done as well, but we do want to make sure that we honor just the land use as well as the residents in the area. I'm sorry, John.
And I just want to clarify that the three-month check-in is with code enforcement now with the planning commissions.
That is correct, thank you, with code enforcement.
Thank you.
Yes.
I second that amended motion.
All right, we have a second from Commissioner Massey. Any further discussion? Okay. Call a question? And LUP 43 is denied, 3-0.
Okay, next item on the agenda is LUP 44 of 2025. Madalia Alvarez requests a temporary land use permit to allow more people and vehicles than the code allows in Land Lot 710 of the 19th District. The property is located on the southeast corner of Pear Road and Hickory Bridge Court. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP 44? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Would the applicant please come forward to be sworn in?
Good morning.
Good morning. How are you?
Doing well. Please state your name for the record, and you have 10 minutes to discuss your application.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Hello, I'm Nada Escobar. I'm Latice Alvarez's daughter. So we're here to request more residential vehicles because we have five vehicles in the house. So the five vehicles is two cars for my brother, two cars from... No, one car is for my other brother who's 18, my mom, and then I have a SUV Toyota. So we also want to request more residence because we have five adults living in the house. And we also have six kids in total living in the house as well. So we had people complaining about leaving our cars on the street in front of our house. So we have three cars there. We have three cars parked in the driveway and a trailer. I forgot to mention, we have a trailer. So that trailer is for my brother. He worked as a landscaping and... So that trailer is from my brother's. He worked as a landscaping and we also have a dump truck, but that dump truck is not always parked there on the driveway. It's usually like whenever my, my, um, my brother needs it for work, so he usually parks it there and then he takes it back to, he has, he's paying this parking so he can leave his dump truck there. But there's usually times where he's late to go leave it to the parking spot where he pays it. So he brings it to the house and leave it in the drive, on the street in front of our house. She will also like to mention that we just barely moved there. We only have like six months, five months living in the house. So in the garage, we don't have no vehicles parked in there. We have, we still have our belongings from the other house. And that's it.
Okay. I think you, any, anything additional?
Oh, we also want to, um, well, she, my mother was thinking to extend the driveway, so we will have any issue on the back of the, of the house.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much. This is in District 4.
If you all will stay, I don't want you to have to, ma'am.
Excuse me, ma'am.
Stay. Since you have the baby, I don't want you to have to come up and down. I'm going to try to ask all of my questions if I can while you're up here.
Okay.
First of all, thank you for bringing a little one. We never get little ones in here. Um, so just wanted to recap. Tell me how many people are in the home, what their ages are, please. Let's start with the people.
So I'm the oldest. I'm 26. Of her siblings. I'm going to go off the siblings. So I'm 26 and then it's my brother who's 20, 23. And then I have another brother who is 18, a sister who's 17. And then I have a sister who is 13, a brother who is 10. And then it's another brother who is seven, then the other brother who is five.
Okay.
So she has a big family. Sorry, he's four.
And another brother that's four?
No, the little one that I said he was five, he's four.
Oh, okay, so he's not, he's almost five. Okay, all right. Um, all right, so that is a total of what, 11? 11 people? Eight people? Eight people? Eight?
Eight children.
Eight children.
Okay.
Eight siblings, including yourself?
Yes.
And then there's mom?
There's mom. And then I have a fiancee living there.
Okay, so now we're at 10. Is that right? Did I get my numbers correct? Okay, all right. I'm not the greatest with math in my head, sorry. All right, so we're at 10 folks. All right. And the ba, are we counting the baby?
12.
So tw, so how many babies do we have?
He's the youngest one, so he's two months.
He's two months, but, okay, so then am I missing one other baby?
No.
Okay. All right. All right, let's see here. Um, and how many vehicles do we have?
We have five in total.
Five in total. I heard, is that including the dump trucks?
No.
Okay, so five in total. Tell me what type of vehicles and who drives them, please.
Okay, so we have a Dodge Ram that my brother used for a landscape. We have a Toyota Forerunner that's my brother's who is, okay, so I have, I have a brother who's 18, who had his own car already.
Okay.
Okay, so my, my brother Mason, he has a Dodge Ram for work. And then my brother Steven, he has his Toyota Forerunner. And then I have a SUV Toyota Forerunner. She has a Toyota Forerunner. And then we have another truck that my fiancee uses for work. It's from the company that they gave him, so he's, since he's the driver.
Okay.
And then we have the trailer that's in the house.
Okay. And how large is your home? What's the square footage of your home?
No clue.
1408, I have it. Thank you, I'm sorry. I asked county. So 1408 is a, is a square footage of your home. And is there a, you, I mentioned, heard you mention that there was a garage?
That's correct.
Is it a two-car, one-car?
No, so like I said, we have, we still have our stuff where we moved in, so we still have, we still had to clean that up so we can park vehicles in that garage.
Understood. My question to you though is, how many cars does the garage accommodate? One car or two? One car, okay, very good. All right, so there's a one-car garage and then there is a driveway in front of, correct?
Correct.
You were also mentioning you're wanting to expand the driveway to the back of the home for additional parking?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Does any of my fellow commissioners have any questions while I think through my next of the applicant?
I do have a question. Um, I think I know the answer, but just, is this a temporary situation or do you consider this to be long-term?
Temporary, because since I already have a family, I'm going to be moving out. So, you know, my, there's going to be more space for my siblings and then less cars. Since we have, since I have my small family, like I said, I have a SUV family and my hu, my fiancee company truck.
Okay.
So it's going to be temporary.
And what timeframe would you anticipate you and your fiancee and child moving out?
Our plan is next year.
Next year?
Next year, in six months, five, the end of the year?
Probably at the end of the year.
End of the year, okay. All right. And beyond you, you said that there's a 26-year-old. And then under you is, the next one is 18? Is that the, the next?
No, under me, there's a 24.
24. 24 is male or female?
He's a male.
He's a male. Do we know his plans of departure or does he plan to just reside in the home?
No, ma'am.
He plans to stay there?
Stay there, yes.
Okay, and then under him is whom?
18.
18, and then we go down to the, to the?
And then the youngest.
To the young ones. Okay, got it. Any other commissioners have any questions of the applicant? Okay, thank you. You, you all can be seated. Thank you so much. Go ahead. I'm sorry. If you can, if you can remain, I think the commissioner just had a question for you. Come on. It's fine. We're here. I apologize. We were trying to keep you up here.
Sorry about that. Just only question was the same one I asked before. Have you had a chance to speak with any of your neighbors? If they are able to accommodate any of the additional cars?
A neighbor, yes, only one of them. And she said it was fine.
So she'd be willing to have you keep one of your cars?
Yes.
On her lot?
She said there was no issue about leaving our cars there.
Okay.
She said the cars that we have there parked in front of the house on the, on the, on the street, we're not bothering nobody because we have it parked. Like the other houses, our neighbors, they have their cars parked on the street as well. And there's no issue going on.
Okay, so, but she's, she said she's okay?
Yes.
If you need to park your car in her lot, she's okay with that?
Yes, we're, we're not at her lot.
All right, okay.
No.
I think we need to clarify. I think what Commissioner Anderson is asking is has your neighbor allowed you to park one of your vehicles on her property?
Oh, that's a good question. We have not asked her that.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
Because of like the public right-of-way, you know, in the street, anybody can park. They can't control and say you can't park, but that is, but if they did allow and you did ask them?
But I'm pretty sure she will allow us, yes.
Okay.
She became friends with my mom.
Okay.
Yes.
Great. So just so I'm doing the math, if, once you and your fiancee move, that would be two cars that go away?
Removed, correct.
And then you have the potential to, if, if the neighbor agrees to it, to remove another car?
She says she's not sure if, uh, one of her sons are going to move out, but she said that she under, someone told her, I'm not sure if this is correct. Since the house has bed, five bedrooms, they told her that every bedroom is, we're allowed to have one vehicle. Not sure if that's correct. They gave her the correct information to, to her.
Maybe we can have John clarify.
No, the, the way the code is structured, it's based on the square footage of the home, not the number of bedrooms. So based on your square footage, you're allowed to have three cars parked on the property. It's not based on bedrooms.
And that doesn't include in the garage, right?
That, that would include one in the garage. They're allowed to have three outside. You know, the max is four, but this house is not big enough to have four?
Yes.
Okay, can I ask them a question?
Please, sure.
Okay, do you own this house?
She does.
Okay, because it, it looks like y'all had a building permit to renovate the house within the past year and you added square footage in the basement for, for living. Is that correct?
Can I repeat that again? I'm sorry.
Uh, it, it, it looks like the house had a building permit recently to, to renovate the house. Um, and it looks like they converted one of the garages into livable space.
Yes, that's correct.
So?
So when we moved in, that house had five bedrooms. So the one, um, like you said, they remodeled it. They, the basement is a room.
Okay, what, what I'm not sure about commissioners is, it says, tax record says the house has four, has 1,408 square feet. I'm not sure if that includes the, the square footage that was renovated recently.
Yeah, because that house was worked down last year.
It usually does not.
Okay, because it's possible that if the tax assessment could revise their records to include what was renovated, they might be able to have one more adult and one more car.
Typically, from my experience, uh, the basement is going to either be the size of the top of the home or a little bit less. And that would actually give them additional square footage to accommodate for that.
Yeah, and this probably would be a little bit less because still ha, half the bottom part is still a one-car garage. So I'm not sure how much of it was actually renovated into livable space. But, you know, this might be one, you know, since there's no opposition, the board might want to hold and, you know, let staff take a look at that to see what the square footage really is of the house.
Understood. Thank you so much for that context. Thank you all. You guys can have a seat.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Okay, with that in mind, thank you so much. That, that was actually very, very helpful. I am ready to make a motion to hold this case to our December's meeting so the applicant can have the basement inspected by county to see if there is a possibility to include additional square footage to make a comprehensive decision with all facts included.
Uh, I second.
All right, we have a second from Commissioner Anderson. Any discussion? Call of question. Okay, and LUP 44 is held. All right, that concludes our agenda for today. We do need to handle one additional order of business, which is approval of our minutes from our planning commission hearing as well as our work session. So I'll entertain a motion and a second.
Madam Chair, I also moved to make a motion to approve all applicable minutes.
Second?
All right, we have a second from Commissioner Anderson. Any discussion? Call of question. Okay, and the minutes are approved, 3-0. That concludes our agenda. Have a great rest of your day. Thank you.